Good evening. Oh, that is loud. I like the new sound system. Today's date is August 22, 2022. Time is 5:30 PM. We are gathered together at 10 West State Street, which is the city hall council chambers. I am calling this meeting to order with the notice to the public that the mayor and council welcome comments from the public during discussion of any of the items on the agenda. To speak, you have to go to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less so that others can be given a similar opportunity to speak. You're to speak clearly and direct your comments to the mayor and council in general, not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to those questions and comments, or have staff respond. Would those who are able join us for the pledge of allegiance?
Okay, roll call.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hough?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Walker?
Here but muted, right? We can see ya. Okay, Dex, give us a thumbs up if you can hear us.
He can't hear.
Okay, we're working on, I can assure everybody in the audience that Dex Walker is present on video, and we're working on trying to figure out how to mute the right button so that he can participate. So we do have a quorum, and the first thing that happens is mayor, council, and administrative amendments, but we get to start with years of service, and I know we have four people listed in the agenda tonight. This is always fun for us. So Chief, would you like to start, please?
Good evening. Wow. Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. So it's always hard to figure out which way to face.
Well, just keep purring around.
I am uncomfortable. I'm uncomfortable as well. So tonight, we're recognizing three of Marshalltown's finest. So right here is Lieutenant Sadie Weekly, and she is celebrating this month, 15 years of service with the Marshalltown Police Department. Currently, Sadie is the patrol commander for our night shift. She has also worked in the police department as a detective, and in about three weeks, she's coming back to detectives to be in charge of our detective bureau, and I'm really excited for her for that. I'm excited for our department because she does a great job, one of the best detectives I've ever worked with. And the really cool thing about Sadie is that she is a recognized expert in the state of Iowa when it comes to domestic violence investigation and sexual violence investigation, and she teaches police officers at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy in those areas. So we're very fortunate to have Sadie on the team. She also participates on the state of Iowa Child Death Review Team. So she's recognized across the state for her expertise, and we're very lucky to have her here, 15 years, and she's already lieutenant. She's probably going to have my job someday, so watch her. She's doing a great job. Next to her is Justin Allen, and he is celebrating, it's hard to believe, because he doesn't look old enough, but he is celebrating 10 years of service already. So Justin is on our SWAT team. He currently works first shift patrol, uniform patrol. He's also our defensive tactics instructor, so don't mess with him, because he will take care of you. Justin is one of the nicest people you will ever meet, and I'm not sure I've ever received a complaint from anybody about Justin, and he's been here for 10 years. That's hard to do, because sometimes we do things that people don't like. But Justin does a great job for us, and we appreciate his service and 10 years of excellent service. So thank you, Justin. And then behind Justin is, you can't miss him, Detective Paul Heitman. So Paul is also celebrating 10 years of service with the police department. He's been in our detective bureau for a little, year and a half? Year and a half. So he does a great job as a detective, and Paul is well-known for writing excellent police reports. Everybody at the county attorney loves Paul because he does a great job on his investigations. He's very thorough, so if you do something you shouldn't be doing, he's going to catch you. He does a great job. Paul also founded the department's food drive, a very popular program at the police department, and he's the guy that got it all started. So he's celebrating 10 years of exceptional service as well. I really appreciate everything that you all do for us. You do a great job. There's a note there for uncertain if Justin was going to be here. You made it. So, on behalf of the city of Marshalltown, I want to thank you for your service and congratulate you on 15 years for Sadie and 10 for Paul and Justin. So thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything? You can say anything you want.
Move this a little bit. I just want to thank you guys for your support. It is so easy to work in the city of Marshalltown because we have the support of the mayor and the council as well as the community. So it makes our job easy, and it makes it fun for us as well. So thank you guys for the support for us.
Thank you, Sadie.
we serve. Thank you, citizens, for your support, because without you, our job would be much, much harder. So thank you for all the good years, and I look forward to at least 10 more.
Well said. Thank you.
He's the best.
I'll echo the same sentiment that we're grateful for their community's support. As the chief said, I couldn't have gotten my food drive to be successful without the community being behind us 100% on that. So it's been a great success, and I very appreciate the community's support of us, not just for those kind of events, but also for helping us because we depend on the community to be able to solve a lot of our crimes that we have here, and a lot of it is people coming forward and giving us information, especially now. That's even more true that I'm in the detectives division now. It's even truer now than it ever has been that we need the support of the community and them willing to come forward to give us information. And also appreciate the council's support and all for everything that you do for us to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Were any of you up on the roof? I saw last week we were doing another one of those outreach things. Yeah, well, thank you for that. And I tell you what, I brag about this police department when I go around the state, because I know we are recruiting and we're competing against people that have bigger budgets than other cities. I put any city's police department against ours for the outreach that we have, and especially the outreach for the diversity that we experience in this community. I mean, we have a diverse police force, but you guys are just doing the best job out there, meeting the public and having a coffee with a cop and doing the food drives and things like that, and it does not go unnoticed. And that's why it's really a lot of pride that I take in what you guys do. So got that new building for you, and that was one thing, but people, you can buy those back our blue signs, got one in my front yard, and I'm proud to keep it there. So thank you very much. Very good. Oh, good. You bet, Jeff. I didn't see Becky.
And she is not here. So I just wanted to be real quick and brief, but Becky Backy's been here for 10 years, and she is the glue that holds our department together. If she doesn't show up for work today, it's one of the worst days ever. And she has four days she has to lose between now and the end of the month, so I'm going to have some bad days in the next two weeks. But we will get through, and I appreciate everything she does for us.
Yeah, thank you. She is the smiling face you see when you come in the building downstairs, and she's been doing a nice job at that, too. So thank you, Becky. Appreciate that. Okay, time to see, well, I didn't ask if anybody has any comments to make now, so let me do that first among the councilors. Anybody like the mic?
Your Honor, I would. Go for it.
Just a quick statement after Thursday. Recognize I may have reacted in more of abrupt manner than some are used to, but I was not expecting to be blindsided with the information presented, mostly of which was new to me and what I assume to be new to the majority of the other council members. We have department heads who are and should be acting as subject matter experts for us, and a city administrator who should be transparent regardless of what one would deem as pertinent detail. After Thursday, I think the reality of the position we are in is much greater than one assumed, and thus the reason I was quite upset. Our deficit on paper is ultimately an inappropriate representation of the position we are in as a city today and what seems to be for quite some time. While recognize this did not happen overnight, and we have made great strides in the last few years for growth and progress in Marshalltown, we cannot let the items shared be unaddressed. I will speak for myself, but would not be shocked if I stand, but would be shocked if I stand alone in the fact that I was a bit taken back to the items shared last Thursday and stark reality of the position we're in. I hope you all recognize that the franchise fee discussed is a necessity, but truly only a Band-Aid to the holes we have in our existing budget. I hope that the future opportunities, I hope that as future opportunities present themselves, details are not shared in the same manner presented last Thursday, to drop the number of what I will call bombs on our desk through the three hours of a meeting that was inappropriate and was not a good use of our time. If the goal is to make a point to the council that we have more needs than the fee can fix, it was accomplished. That said, the manner of which it was done was not fruitful, and for me, created a sour taste. We want to hear the facts. We want to have a conversation. Thursday was not that. We either too scared of the public feedback and engagement to admit the situation presented, or too blind to recognize the gap between priority items, budget deficits, and repercussions of a run to failure mentality. We cannot nor should we jeopardize the growth, but we must realize the items brought forth need fixed. We need a, we have a significant gap, and I hope that we realize that such items like the compost fee or franchise fee being discussed will only truly address a small portion of the need. As we approach budget season, I look forward to healthy conversations so we can discuss needs year-over-year spin and opportunities to fix more than the few items presented. Ask department heads to come forward and present frustrations more regularly, not on a once occasion but time. We have a fun road ahead of us, and I'm optimistic to the good to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Okay, well, it's probably an appropriate time for me to announce that I have formed a committee. Thank you, Gabe, for being willing to serve on it. Jeff Snyder as well, and Dex Walker will be serving. I visited with several, some had other time commitments, and so this way we have two of the new councilors that came in about the same time, and one who's actually had more experience from past, for being elected a second time. So I appreciate those on the committee doing that, and I'm hoping the two of you here can stay around long enough to visit with me about our first meeting. I'd like to propose something tonight when we're done, to keep that moving and moving fast. Thank you. Okay, city mister, any comments for you?
None, Your Honor.
Very good. Let's entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Seconded.
Very good. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. And Dex, we heard you fine that time, so I think we got the mic problem fixed for now, so that's good. Okay, when able, read what's on that agenda.
Approve the minutes for the August 8 meeting and the bill list in amount of $1,602,057.72. Approve liquor license renewals for Golden Land Asian Food at 11 East State Street, Walmart Supercenter, number 581, at 2802 South Center Street, Casey's number 1564, at 1009 West Lincoln Way with ownership update, Casey's number 3508, at 108 Iowa Avenue West with ownership update, resolution amending a grant agreement with Melinda Diane Unimark for additional work at 14 East Main Street, resolution to approve a 12-month extension of time to complete the city code building upgrade grant work at 207 East Main Street, resolution approving contract change order number one for the Box Culvert Repair Project, number SMW20003, an increase of $58,476.60.
Thank you. On to item F, motions. There are four of those. What's our first one?
Motion to postpone the award of contract for the Marshalltown Facade Rehabilitation Project, number ECO21002, in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Very good. Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Michelle Smonheimer, Housing Community Development Director. This is our downtown revitalization project that we have been working on for a while. We had bids that were due just this last week, did not come in as favorable as we would have liked to have seen that. So we are discussing various options, both with the state, Region Six as our administrator on this project, RDG, the architect on it, before making a decision. So we're looking to just postpone this before we make a final determination as to what the next step will be.
Thank you. Any questions or comments up here from the council?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Michelle, what does this do to the timeline with the state paying their half?
Well, so that's part of our discussions. We have certain timelines that we need to make in terms of awarding a bid, and that's from one year from our grant award, which was October. So we still have time to, you know, make adjustments as needed. There's still time. And then if we need to approach the state and talk about an extension to that time, we think that that's something that we can probably have conversations with as well. So Region Six has already started to have some of those conversations with the state. So we hope to find a solution here, whether that's a new bid or alternates in and out of that project on what was bid, still yet to be determined.
So we'll look forward to seeing you next month, right?
Good chance of it.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Anybody else up here? Any public comment? Roll call.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Okay, that carried on to the next motion. I guess we got six, seven?
Motion to approve a five-day liquor license for MG Entertainment at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds for a rodeo on September 4.
Move for approval. Second.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Was there no discussion offered? Yeah, no, I anticipated there wouldn't be any. But when I do that, if anybody doesn't have any discussion, speak up, either out in the audience or up here at the council dais, and we'll discuss.
I just usually ask Chief Tupper if he has any questions.
No, that's true.
On these, you know, rodeos. I just was caught off guard, is all, Your Honor.
Nope. We're open for discussion, so that's not a bad question.
I do not have any concerns.
Some I anticipated the answer in this time.
Yes.
Yeah. Let's do roll call.
Thompson?
I can also predict how everybody's going to vote on it.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Exactly as predicted. That carried. Our next motion.
Motion to approve a temporary premise transfer of the Central Iowa Fairgrounds beer permit to the Activities Building for the MG Entertainments event on September 4.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody want to talk about it? Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
But those at home may not know, we have quite a few people waiting to visit tonight, so I am speeding the meeting up as fast as I can. Next motion.
Motion to approve a five-day liquor license for the Impala Ballroom at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds Arena for a rodeo concert on September 11.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion on this one? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Next motion. That carried.
Motion to approve a temporary premise transfer for the Central Iowa Fairgrounds beer permit to the Activities Building for the Impala Ballrooms event on September 11.
Don't be bashful.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Carried, and next.
Motion to approve a five-day liquor license for a midnight ballroom at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds for a rodeo on September 24.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
That carried as well. Next item.
Motion to approve a temporary premise transfer of the Central Iowa Fairgrounds beer permit to the Activities Building for the Midnight Ballrooms event on September 24.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seems like we can wrap these together sometimes, but any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Very good. That carried on, that carried as well on to item G, resolutions. What's our first one of those?
Resolution allowing open containers on public ways for Oktoberfest events, September 22 to the 25.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Discussion?
Yes, the Oktoberfest Foundation has submitted their application for this special event. The application was included in the packet along with the schedule of events and a map of street closures. The city staff have met with the committee to review their plans for these events, and there will be a beer vendor that will apply for event license should the council approve this resolution for open containers over the four days.
Dwayne Dixon, on behalf of Oktoberfest, we are currently one month out from the festival, of the festival's first day starts September 22. We've got a lot of planning figured out, and I guess a lot yet to go, but it's getting there. Other than that, I'm looking forward to seeing all of you at the festival.
Thank you. Any discussion questions up here? Any public discussion out there? Thanks for volunteering to do this again. It's quite an event every year here. Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Carried as well. On to the next resolution.
Resolution approving final plat for the Glenwood Park Seventh Edition.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion?
Michelle Smonheimer, Housing Community Development Director. This is for Glenwood Park Seventh Edition. You may recall seeing the preliminary plat a while ago. This is the area to the west of South Sixth Street, South Eighth Street, north of West Merrill Hibbs Boulevard. So this is the final plat for the area. So this is the step in the process that actually creates those lots, so they can be sold and developed. We have, I believe, 35 lots altogether, single-family development residential, its own medium-density residential now under our new zoning classifications. So Plan Zoning Commission reviewed this at their last regular meeting, recommended approval to the council. That's all that I have for you. So I'd recommend approval of that to get these finalized and get lots developed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Michelle, or comments in general up here? Any public comment?
I'm here on behalf of McLaren Engineering.
Yeah, sorry, we do have Jose here from McLaren in case you have any questions for the engineering firm.
We've got some people remotely, so.
Yeah, I'm just here in case you guys have any questions. I'm Jose from McLaren Engineering.
I'm not seeing any questions from the audience, so let's call a roll on this one.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Lost the visual on Dex. Let's, let me declare that that motion passed.
Let me call Hoop?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
By a majority, and then next item is a public hearing, right?
Yes, public hearing and resolution approving the vacation of certain easements obtained through quick claim deed in the Glenwood Park Fourth Edition to Marshall.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing is open at 5:54 PM, and I'll assume the clerk received no written comments about it. It's now time for public comments first, and then staff review.
Heather Thomas, Public Works. In front of you, we are recommending the vacation of two easements. This area was previously platted as the Fourth Edition. With the change of the roads and the lot layout that was just approved in the previous item, we are recommending the vacation of the two areas shown on the screen. One was for a planned recreational trail that will not be going through, and another was for a public utility easement that's no longer needed because there's no road in that area. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and it is time for council comments or questions. Hearing seeing none, I declare the public hearing is closed at 5:55 PM. I will call for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Okay, that passed. Next, public hearing.
Public hearing and resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 4 and 6 West Grant Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to KKH LLC.
Public hearing is still, I mean, the public hearing is declared to be open now at 5:56 PM. The clerk did not receive any written comments, I'm assuming.
No, Your Honor.
And it's time for public comments. If there are any jump up now, seeing nobody jumping up, staff review.
Yes, so this is one that we actually accepted a bid on for $1,025 a few months ago. We had an incorrect legal description in the proceedings that we went through back in June, and so this is basically redoing that process to be able to convey the property with the correct legal description.
And solve that for staff review, council comments. Anybody want to comment? Otherwise, I'll declare the public hearing is closed till at 5:56 PM. We are getting this done pretty fast tonight, and I call for motion to approve.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Next, next public hearing is what?
Public hearing and resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title of city-owned land to the Moyer Family Real Estate LLC.
Very good. The public hearing is open at 5:57 PM. You received no written comments at the clerk's office. It's time for public comments. If anybody wants to jump up or raise your hand right now, otherwise we'll go to staff review.
Staff review, just as a reminder, a few months ago, I think in May, we had agreed to move forward with selling a very small portion of a property, basically between the levee and the west property line of the Carl of Marshalltown lot, and so it's about .19 acres. And so this is basically the final step that we need to take before we can actually convey the property, and I believe- and I believe the intended use is to move one of the larger buildings onto that for storage of, uh, maintenance equipment and, uh, exterior maintenance equipment and things, so we're using a facility they have on their lot currently.
Tony Mills, Carl Chevrolet, um, so we've moved the building already, uh, not to this piece of ground. So we've moved it back to the back of the property line, but, um, once you see the new layout for the CDGR building, so we're in, uh, final discussions with CDGR, Stellantis, and, um, uh, our architects to build a facility next to it with, uh, service center, body shop, um, and then there'll be a loading dock, um, so this ground will actually help with that loading dock entrance, um, for the trucks as they come around the facility to be able to back into that building, um, and without it, uh, the loading dock just doesn't work, so, um, once we go through review for the other site plan, um, you'll see that, but, uh, this piece of ground is still needed, um, due to us moving that building and, uh, truck traffic that we'll need to, uh, be able to handle getting into that dock and get the parts unloaded, so.
Thank you. Uh, that was, uh, that concludes staff review. Are there any council comments? I'll declare the public hearing is closed at 5:59 PM and solicit a motion to approve it.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Very good. Uh, roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Okay, that carried as well. Tony, uh, councilor Hoop and I, we, every weekend do a tour around Marshalltown. It's fun to go to the north side of town now to see what you're doing out there, and then go beyond where Riverside Park's going to be fixed up pretty nice coming up, so things are really moving on North Third Avenue. Thank you. Uh, let's go to the next public hearing.
Public hearing and resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title to a portion of vacated but unconveyed alley to 307 South Eighth Avenue.
Okay, and, and Tony, I invite people who've come here for one specific purpose to leave, and nobody will feel bad if you go. I know it's always uncomfortable, and you can sit here until 10 o'clock, but you'd wonder why. All right, no problem. Uh, the public hearing is open at 6 PM. Uh, did you receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Any public comments? Nobody raising the hand? Staff review.
Yes, this is a, um, a piece of, uh, an alley that, uh, back in 1957, the council undertook the process to, um, vacate it as well as then to convey part of it. Uh, I could actually find deeds for the, the split of the alley in our vault as well, but those deeds were never recorded, so this is taking the step to effectuate what was happening in 1957 but never, um, followed through, so this is one piece. Um, the other half of this alley of this North Third portion will go with 308 South Seventh Avenue as was the original intent in 1957.
You mean 307?
So 308 South Seventh Avenue is on one side of the alley, 308 South, or 307 South Eighth Avenue is on the other, so each of them will be getting half of the North Third of this alley.
Can't have an even number and an odd number on the same side of the street.
There's the alley, so one's on Eighth Avenue, um, on the three, 307 South Eighth Avenue is on the west side of South Eighth Avenue, 307 South, or 308 South Seventh Avenue is on the east side of the street.
I misheard it the first time, sorry.
And I wonder why we're in such a rush, you know? Okay, that was staff, uh, review, any other council comments? Public hearing is, uh, declared to be done at 6:02 PM, and I had a solicitude motion to get this done.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Roll call.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Very good, on to the seventh and last item, public hearing.
Public hearing and resolution approving planned specifications, form of contract, and cost for the water pollution control, headworks, and digester improvements project in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, being project number WPC 21001.
Public hearing is open at, uh, 6:02 PM. Did you get any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments. Raise a hand. No hands going up. Time for staff review. Heather?
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. Um, this project is out at our water pollution control facility. Um, the estimated cost of this project with a 5% contingency is just over $10.4 million. This project is to replace the grit and screening equipment in the headworks facility in addition to rehabbing two of the digesters, two of the clarifiers, some dewatering wells, and also the SCADA system. Um, we plan to open bid September 7th, and we have a completion date of September of 2024. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And now it's time for council comments or questions.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Heather, will you remind the public where this money's coming from?
Absolutely. Um, this project is funded through a combination of cash on hand and an SRF revenue loan. Um, we have a planned SRF revenue loan of 13.125 million that'll help fund part of this project and part of the previously approved CIPP project, but all the repayment will be from revenue.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else on the council with comments or questions? I'll declare the public hearing closed at 6:04 PM and solicit a motion to approve it.
So moved, Your Honor. Second, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good, that carried. On to item H, ordinances. What's our first ordinance?
Ordinance 15046, to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 73, Recreation Vehicles, add additional language to the bicycle regulations and include rules and regulations for the use of all-terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles and golf carts, first reading.
Is there a motion to approve it to get this started?
Your Honor, I, I think we tabled this at the last.
We, we actually postponed it, which was different from tabling.
Postpone until this meeting.
Sure works about the same though, doesn't it? I guess it didn't take an extra vote. Okay. Anyway.
I'll move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I believe there's a couple people here for the, from the OHV people that might want to speak to this.
Um, I don't really have a whole lot to say. I can answer some questions if somebody has any.
Jim Allen, 302 Wakefield Circle, uh, treasurer of the Iowa River OHV Club here in town and vice president of Iowa Off-Highway Vehicle Association.
Um, we, we've had a prior discussion about this, and you, you told me that you were in on the discussions down at the State House.
Well, actually, actually, I was in a, in a meeting at the DNR building with DNR staff and, uh, uh, I guess the, uh, research analyst that was in charge of handling this at the state level, you know, getting documents and things together and whatnot. Um, basically, they said the intent of the law was to allow people to drive to and from their home to any designated riding park, to a gravel road, or, uh, linear trail system, and that's basically what the intent of the law was as far as allowing it, giving cities the power to prohibit in certain streets where the, where traffic could be dangerous, such as Highway 14.
We did get, uh, an opinion back from our city attorney who, in his opinion, regulate could also mean ban citywide, so that's kind of what we're operating under here. So I, I myself, I, I still believe that, uh, there are so many cities now that are adopting, uh, rules and regulations to allow these on city streets that it wouldn't be a hindrance here in Marshalltown. Um, I know that we kind of set it aside so that Chief Tupper could weigh in on it, if you would.
Mike Tupper, Marsh Town Police Department. So, I'm going to preface this by saying, this is not a hill I want to die on, okay? So, um, this is one of those issues that I'll roll with the punches and, and, uh, make, make lemonade out of lemons, but I have concerns. I'm concerned about traffic safety. Uh, we've spent a lot of time talking here recently, and you've had to listen to me a lot here recently talk about traffic safety. Um, I'm concerned that this could diminish traffic safety in our community, and I'm also concerned that it will increase the workload that we have, um, already a high workload for our police officers. So those are my two main concerns, um, but we will, we'll roll with the punches, and if this is something that you want to move forward with, I understand, um, I'm not, I'm not in favor of allowing these vehicles on city streets. That's my position.
Thank you.
Other council comments or questions?
I was just wondering if I could ask the council of members who, who may oppose this, what their objections to this would be and why, other than possibly safety issues?
Well, this, this is a good time to ask the council for comments, but...
You know, I guess my, my, my thing of it is, you know, you can have people on motorcycles, Harley-Davidsons, other crotch rockets and things like that, running up and down the streets, uh, cars with loud exhausts and things like that. I have a neighbor across the street from me that has a car with very loud exhaust, and he, he starts it and revs it at 5:00 in the morning. So if, if you're looking at noise issues, this isn't an issue. Uh, one thing I will add is the City of Council buffs allows these on their streets as well with limitations. That's all I have, I guess.
I believe you supplied a list also of other towns and cities here in Iowa that, that do allow it. Marion just passed one, too.
Yeah.
Um, I believe Fort Dodge.
No, they do not have one. They do have one in Webster County.
Okay.
But they do not have one in Fort Dodge. I misspoke when I was talking to you the other day.
Now, I know it, it seems like a little bit thin, but, um, they also thought that it would help towns with economic development, is that correct?
That is true. Um, there are several, uh, cities in eastern Iowa, northeast Iowa that do allow these on the roads, um, with, you know, the City of Independence allows them on certain streets. Uh, people do go eat at restaurants with them, they do run to town, go shopping, and go home. Um, like I said, the, the intent of the law was to be able to allow people to drive from their home to a gravel road so they could go ride without having to spend 15, 20 minutes loading it on, machine onto a trailer or more machines, and then unloading it when you get to your destination and riding again. Like I said, they, if the state of Iowa considers these, uh, appropriate modes of transportation, it's really not any different than a motorcycle. They're just, you know, motorcycle is just as dangerous on the streets as an ATV or side-by-side. Side-by-sides do have seat belts in them, and usually a full row cage.
The ones we're talking about is you got to be over 18.
Yes.
You got to have seat belts on if you're running side-by-sides.
Yep.
You have to be registered, you have to have insurance.
Yes, all the same.
And a license.
All the same, uh, qualifications as any vehicle on the road. Brake lights, taillights, and you have to run with your headlights on all the time.
Hey, Mike, you talked the, uh, last time about registration. Does that, that means license plates, or is that just a, a state number?
I can answer that question. The registration is through the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and they're the ones that take care of the titling through the county auditor, I believe, so like where you go register your boats, snowmobiles.
This is the same as putting a number on a boat?
Yes, but it's, it's, it's an identification sticker that has, uh, there's a registration number on it, and that can be tied to the vehicle that it's on, so I mean, you can't take it off of one and put, excuse me, put it on another one without a lot of difficulty, most likely ruining the sticker. Plus, they have it, supposed to carry a registration with them as well.
Thank you. Other council comments or questions?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Jim, I appreciate what you guys are doing and everything, and I've had several calls on this one both ways, but I've got several concerns. One is, you know, you say the intent was for the person leaving their house, going to a gravel, you know, getting out of the city limits.
Or going to an ATV park.
I don't like ordinances we can't enforce, okay? Now you've put the burden on the police department to decide, is that guy going to a park, going to a gravel road, or just riding around? I don't like that. Um, you said about motorcycles, if the state wants to mandate to the cities that motorcycles are legal on all streets statewide, and they want to do this with the ATV, UTVs, I'm okay with that. But we also got some information saying that 49% of all deaths on ATVs, UTVs occurred on roads, and I've got to believe up, when those numbers were given to us, and I, and I'll be honest, I didn't have time to verify that, it was just in an email to us, that half the deaths on ATVs, UTVs were on the road, and I've got to believe 99% of those were on gravel roads, you know, not intermixed with traffic, and if we open this up to putting these ATVs and UTVs on city streets, I think that number's going to skyrocket, the percentage. So I'm going to be honest with you, Jim, I love the OHV park, you know, Mike brought me in on that and what, what you guys do. I don't like ordinances we can't enforce, I don't like adding to more traffic on the streets, and to be honest with you, when we start talking about the golf carts, I'm, I'm against those, and I will make a motion to ban those also. I don't want those on the streets, so that's where I'm at.
I might add that, uh, I don't know the specific traffic issues with the deaths and that. I do know that a majority of them that do happen tend to be people that are under the age of 18, sometimes even under the age of 16, who have no business on the road anyway.
And I agree with you. I, again, I didn't have time to vet all this, so I'm just taking...
Yeah, like I said, I, and maybe, maybe the thing to do is to do some more research and come up with some better statistics.
And I do have one more question, your honor.
Go for it.
In a phone call I got right before this meeting, it's my understanding, no matter what we do, approve this or deny this, that farmers have an exemption, that they can go through the cities?
I'm not sure about that, but there is, there is currently a law on the books that allows farmers to travel from their home for agricultural purposes.
Do you know the answer to that, chief?
I don't.
And that, that's where the 35 mile an hour speed came from as well.
That's what I was told on that phone call.
One, one thing I would like to say is most people that are going to use them in town for traffic to drive back and forth are going to do it instead of using their car, their truck, or their motorcycle or bicycle.
Jim, one last comment from me and I'll be done. Don't get me wrong. I, I truly see both sides, but I'm just, I'm on that side that, no. But I, I get it. And this is a tough one for me.
Like I said, if, if people would drive and follow the laws, there shouldn't be an issue. I mean, they're, an ATV is probably more visible than a motorcycle because it's usually a little bit larger. It's wider and they're usually just as long.
Other counselors? Otherwise, public comment?
Lonnie Hoglin, 909 Stegman. I can, I didn't know anything about this tonight. I can see both sides of it. I run Hoglin Auto Plaza on East Main. I've got a little 13-year-old kid. We get on our golf cart that we use all the time and go from my business up to Casey's, get a cold pop someday. I don't know if it's legal to drive on the street or on the sidewalk on most of it. I feel a little odd, but I give the right of way to every car and say, hey, I make sure they're clear, but they don't have any business on the road. Maybe they shouldn't be on Highway 14. Duh, that's a kind of a given. But what if you're on Anson Street? If this would pass, maybe Anson would be legal. Golf carts, they don't have much room in a size city of Marshalltown. Maybe Albion, maybe LaGrande. Then it's a little more reasonable, but I wouldn't be in favor. I'd be cleaning up more accidents, helping up the officers.
Serena Stabinow, 1403 West Main. I am against this big time. There's going to be accidents. Kids are going to be getting on it. You know how kids can be. They sneak off with their friend. Not a good idea. Bad idea. Just imagine your kids. You come home, you find out they've been hit. Not a good idea.
Other public comment?
Brian Erwin with the OHV Club, and I've been involved in the snowmobile club locally for years. Possibly a way to settle some of it would be designated routes, similar to what we've had in effect for years for the snowmobile use. Basically, the riding that the people are interested in are out of town, but that would let them have access to food and fuel if they need. I don't know how you would go about designating those routes, but it seems like it's simplified our snowmobile use. And if somebody is not on a designated route, then the law says, or your ordinance would allow you to enforce that. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Anybody else in the public like to comment? Yes, sir.
My name's David Willetts. I live out of town in Bangor. So I, different perspective, I guess, but my wife and I have lived all over Philadelphia, LA, Chicago. Wisconsin has had side-by-sides with license plates, you know, so they, they go around. I don't, I do not condone drinking and driving, but they, bar hopping is a regular thing that happens up in Wisconsin. You can rent them. Obviously, on the rental, you're not supposed to drink and drive, but it's worked in Wisconsin for years and years and years. And as far as kids operating them, my son is eight as of a week and a half ago. We live on the farm. We actually do farm. When I need parts or something, he runs across the field in the side-by-side. I'm a mediocre parent on my best day and my kid is very responsible. So to the, to the answer, the, you know, the kids, the kids, the kids, that's thrown around in government all the time, to provide funding, to revoke funding, to make laws, to change laws. If a kid's not supposed to be on it, they shouldn't really be considered in legislation of it, right? As far as the officers, genuinely appreciate all officers nationwide, I would say regardless of what's decided, well, I guess if it's decided that they're not legal, then it would force, not force, it would negate the cop's hand. But when I was at Iowa State, we just knew you didn't do anything stupid in Huxley. I was riding motorcycles and when we went through Huxley, we never sped. We stopped at the stoplight. Everyone was, you know, on a parade through Huxley. Because Huxley had a reputation, and I know you guys are overworked to begin with, but Huxley had a reputation that if you're 45 in a 30, in a 45 and a 40, you're getting a ticket. I mean, they just, they dropped the hammer. So if this passes, and I hope it does, establish Marshalltown as a absolute zero tolerance. Write in something in there about impounding the side-by-side for a month, for two months. I mean, you take, take away a kid's toy, they learn pretty quick. Take away an adult's side-by-side, they'll learn pretty quick. So I appreciate the time and what y'all are doing.
Thank you. You do have well-behaved children. I've been watching them through the meeting. Any other public comment? Okay. Time for the roll call.
Schneider.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Walker.
No.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
No.
Kel.
No.
Lonnie Hoff.
Yes.
Okay.
Your honor, I'd make a motion. Part of this motion was the golf carts being moved from one chapter to another. I'd make a motion to ban the use of golf carts on the city streets.
Here's where we might miss having a legal opinion about whether that's germane enough to the, probably is, and my...
I, I was just going to say, I think it would be best to direct staff to prepare an ordinance that does that, and then we would not take any action on the next ordinance that is on the agenda until we could figure out what that would interact with, because that was moving some language related to golf carts.
I like that suggestion, too. And I, I don't know if, you know, it would pay to call our legal counsel to see if, if that's... Oh, okay. Well, Steve, why don't I pass to you to see, would a motion like that be germane enough that it was published enough so that we knew it was coming?
I'm struggling to hear you. I've got a pretty hefty delay and I can hear maybe every third word or so. It's just kind of echoing and garbling together. You could have Alicia say it, maybe. I can hear her for some reason.
Counselor Thompson made a motion to ban the use of golf, golf carts on city streets. So we're wondering if we should just advise staff to bring an ordinance amendment forward to the next meeting with such language and not take action on the next ordinance on the agenda.
And if you can hear me, sorry, sorry, it's kind of like the Burger King drive-through at times. But if you can hear me well after the real legal issue here is whether it's germane enough on the published agenda to allow that one?
No, I, I think that's reasonable. There's a, you know, there, the ordinances at issue are, are on the agenda. So if, if that's the determination, I, I would certainly prefer getting kicked back to staff and legal to prepare something than to try to, to change it on a fly with the motion.
Your honor, that being said, I, I pull my motion from the table and taking legal's advice, let this, Jessica's advice, let staff come back.
Okay. Thanks. I think it deserves, you know, it's a different group with golf carts probably that we might hear from. Very good. Okay. Thank you. That, before we go on to discussion items, for whatever's worth, my next jury trial starts Tuesday. It's in Story County. I'm defending a person that was driving into car, hit a motorcycle, pretty bad damages. I've handled a whole lot of ATV cases, side-by-side cases, and more than you would guess, golf cart cases where people have died all around the state. And so what's really important for people is if you get one of those devices, insure them. People think they're covered under homeowners. They think they're covered under autos and they are not. You need insurance if you're going to be driving those things around or letting, letting people on them. So I just had to throw that one on and I just extended the meeting by a minute and a half. Sorry about that.
Point of order, your honor?
Yeah.
We need to act on this next ordinance, correct? Before we move to discussion?
Oh, we didn't, yeah. I guess I was kind of assuming we were going to table that, too, but we probably need a motion to do something with it. All right. Yeah, let's, let's read the next motion.
Ordinance 15047 to amend the code of ordinance, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 70.006, removing regulations for bicycles and golf carts. First reading.
Is there a motion to approve or will this die for not having a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Very good. Discussion on it.
Well, I'd just like to say I think we should keep the golf carts. I know there's a legitimate business purposes between the golf carts in town. They exchange carts all the time when there's tournaments. So I don't think we can ban them because it's pretty unrealistic. They're not very far apart. They don't cross very many roads. At least we need a provision, I think, for the golf courses themselves to be able to share carts and move carts. But I'm not in favor of banning them. I think we should just change the language to be clearer, like we were anticipate, like what was in the UTV ATV ordinance with the maps and the language.
Your honor?
Yes.
So, so you're favoring having unlicensed, unregistered, uninsured vehicles on the streets, but not the ATVs, correct?
For what I stated, I suppose. I'm sure they are insured. I guess I'm not sure, but they probably should be. But I'd have to talk with the owners of the carts.
Your honor, I would just want to point out, this was heavily tied into the prior ordinance. And with that one not passing, I would recommend that we not consider this one until we have a redrafted ordinance related to the request to ban golf carts coming back for consideration, as I think it will substantially change this one as well.
I personally think that's good advice and was anticipating that would be the way we should go. At least we're not talking about scooters tonight, too, at the same time, but at some point, we're probably, you know, other cities have gone there. And there's this really interesting rolling ball that I see around the trails in town that we haven't figured that out yet either. Anyway, other council comments before we either take a vote or entertain a motion to the table? Okay. Well, we got the motion and second, and I forgot to ask for public comment on this one for the golf, golf carts and bicycles.
Dwayne Dixon again, on behalf of Oktoberfest. Speaking to the golf carts, we do use those back and forth between the Miller location, where we have our parade staging, and the downtown. The golf carts that we do use are all licensed and registered and insured and all that. So if nothing else, at least put it in the event registration form or something like that would be a recommendation, at least from my, our perspective, I guess.
And your honor, moving forward, whatever we do, I would believe that we could put something in part of the permit process for special events.
Anyone else from the public? Okay. I think we got to call the roll on the motion, which is to approve the ordinance as recommended.
Can we still talk? Is that actually what we want to do or do we want to table this to a future meeting?
Well, I think your city administrator and mayor think it would be a good idea, but you guys have the vote.
Well, I'd like to see language both ways for just changing the regulations for golf carts to match. And I guess the, if the opposition, they want to try to get rid of them, whatever that would look like with, you know, the stipulation that events and other things could theoretically use them, potentially golf courses, too, if there was exceptions for those.
I, I would recommend that there be a motion to postpone to the September 12th meeting. By then, we'll be able to provide better direction about council consideration of this. I would propose that we have this, rather than bringing ordinances back necessarily, that, or actually, I would say postpone to the September 26th meeting so that we have the September 12th meeting to have a discussion item related to the banning of golf carts and can then move forward with something on September 26th in an actual ordinance format that's there for your consideration, since there seems to be some, some debate at this point about the golf carts and where to go.
I'd be happy to make that motion for discussion with a future motion.
I'll consider that as a motion to postpone. Apparently different from a motion to table, but I'm not smart enough to know the difference. Is there a second to the motion to postpone?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion by anybody up here or out there? Well, let's call the roll on that motion to postpone.
Kel.
Yes.
Lonnie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good. Postponed it is. Okay. On to the next items, and those are discussion items, the first of which is a discussion of the financial support of Region Six Housing Trust Fund.
Yes, I'll do a quick introduction of Marty Wymore. He is the director at the, at Region Six Resource Partners. And last week, there was a, an unexpected change, I would say, that basically brought forth this item for discussion to support the housing trust fund in place of Marshall County supporting it.
Marty Wymore with Region Six Resource Partners here in Marshalltown and representing the Housing Trust Fund tonight. And we thank you for your consideration of this item. It's certainly an unusual practice for me to come before cities. So the Housing Trust Fund was incorporated back in 2009, and we've currently expended about $1.5 million across Marshall County for housing improvement activities. So the types of projects that we do with the trust fund are owner-occupied housing improvements. And then we've also assisted three projects here in Marshalltown with gap financing for affordable rental projects. One of those is Marshalltown Lofts. One is Marshalltown Senior Residences. And the other project is the Tall Corn Renovation Project. So those are the only rental projects that we've done. We've assisted several Cersei homes to do exterior renovations on those homes. So on those particular homes, we put on new siding, roofs, windows, soffit fascia for those residences. After the 2018 tornado, we basically reserved at least the, the year after that to tornado housing improvements. We spent roughly $360,000 for owner-occupied housing improvements post-tornado. Most of those projects were roof repairs for owner-occupied homes. We did a few chimneys and a few other repairs just to stabilize those homes and make sure that they're good houses going forward. So since 2009, we've preserved across the whole county here roughly 75 homes. And we have the opportunity now to apply for our annual housing award from the Iowa Finance Authority. We need to secure $37,581 from some source here in Marshall County in order to receive an award of $178,959 for Marshall County area housing improvements. I guess for the City of Marshalltown here, if, I guess if you provide a resolution like this and you want to narrow that total assistance for just Marshalltown, that's certainly something that can be done. I guess our typical projects, again, are owner-occupied housing improvements. We focus on emergency housing repairs. So the improvements that we do now are all exterior related. We do roof repairs, window repairs, siding replacement. We've done some handicap ramps. Sometimes sewer laterals are collapsed, sometimes water lines from the main into the home are bad and we have to replace those items as well. So I guess our deadline for seeking this additional funding from IFA is October 1st. So we do need a decision within the next 30 days here roughly on this $37,581. And I do have the support of the three counties around here. We also work in Harden, Powashik and Tama counties. I can try to address any questions you may have at this point. The Housing Trust Fund is governed by a board of directors. John Hall is one of our new board members and Michelle Spahnheimer has been on the board since the beginning. And Don Snyder from MICA is also on the trust fund board and they set our overall policy.
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
There's still a real need for this type of programs here in town. It seems like we're, we're doing well, getting everything cleaned up, but we've still got, there's still quite a few properties that need help that, and with, with programs like this, that it really does help. And it also spurs more development into that neighborhood. When one house gets fixed up, it rolls down the, rolls down the street. So I'm in favor of this myself.
Your honor?
Yes.
Marty, how large is the average grant that you guys give to people to do this? And how many homes do you think this would cover?
So we go up to 25,000 per home. We'd like to spread the money out just because we have a two-year waiting list or so for projects. So we like to stay down in that 15,000 range and we like to make a difference in the appearance of the house. You know, when people drive by the house, you don't want it to be the constant neighborhood eyesore. You want it to show a difference.
Do these projects try to use local contractors and local supplies?
We have contractors that bid on these. We have two, two to three local contractors that bid on them. We do have one, one contractor from out of town that bids as well. So there's kind of... So there's kind of guarantee which one will get the project.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can you reiterate or clarify that stipulating that these funds are spent within Marshalltown city limits is possible and does not affect the grant application?
Certainly, yeah. If the city of Marshalltown elects to say that your $37,000 plus the $179,000 needs to be spent within Marshalltown for this 23 application, certainly that's something we can follow.
I'd reiterate, Councilmember Lottie Hoff, I mean, we'd be silly not to spend a dollar to get three back.
Mr. Hoop.
I would, I'd be in favor of this if you can control it within the city limits, because this is the second project that's come up that the county has refused to help, and they come back to us, and we do all the helping, and that's, that's not right to me.
Your Honor, if I may.
You may.
Marty, I'd agree from Iowa State's in the social aspects of housing. I appreciate what you do. I get it. I'm all about this. I support what you do. However, after Thursday's meeting, one of these days, we have got to stop writing checks to agencies outside of the city. I'm sorry, we've got some hard decisions to make. You know, if, if the park and rec director comes to us and tells us he can't afford a $10,000 slide to put back into a neighborhood park, and now we're talking about the average grant's $15,000 for a house, we're talking about fixing two and a half houses, getting back our $37,000. Behind the scenes, I'm there for you, I'll even help, but we have got to stop writing checks. We've got to take care of our own bills first. I'm sorry.
Your Honor, is my mic working well enough that I can comment?
Loud and clear.
I think that the, the opportunity for us to be able to put forward some money, to pull down a larger amount of money from the Iowa Finance Authority, to put good dollars into homes that need some love, to bring up their value, is extremely valuable for this town. And I echo Councilman Hoop's comment that the big disappointment is that our county doesn't come to the table with us to improve things to Marshalltown, when we have a huge influence on the coffers for our whole county. We feel, I feel like we come with a foot forward for the folks who live here and advocating for them, but I don't always feel the same way about our county partners, and it's frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilor you'd like to speak before we open it to the public? It's open to the public. Nobody's hand is up, let's call the roll. Oh, we didn't have a motion. Oh, yeah, we're discussion items.
I make a motion.
Why don't we have a public hearing while we're at it?
I would recommend if, if the council would like to see this come forward, that there would be a motion to place a resolution on the September 12th meeting restricting the funds to Marshalltown and that local option sales tax capital, or local option sales tax council designated be the funding source.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson.
No.
Walker.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Very good. That one carried, and before going on to the next discussion item, thanks, Mr. Weymore. Some of us know just how much money you bring into Marshall County in the work that you do and over the time that you've done it. And along with Michelle Spahnheimer, who's done so much good for the lead grants in town and saved kids' lives for eating their lead paint, we sure appreciate what you're doing. So thanks for coming here, and yeah, I'm sorry that you have to pick on our city instead of others, but we got your back. Thank you. Okay, the next discussion item is Chapter 1, 17 Secondhand Dealers, Itinerant Dealers, and Pawn Brokers. This ought to be a short discussion. The mic is open.
Good evening. Chris Jones, Captain of Operational Services for the Police Department. Back in May of this year, I was asked to take a look at our current pawn ordinance and revise that from the original 19, I think it was 1991 version that it's been on the books. In doing so, I partnered with Lieutenant Kyle Stevenson and Chief Tupper in taking a look first at other communities that we have investigative relationships with and other communities that have both pawn shops, but then also secondhand sale stores, and taking a look at the ordinance that are currently in place. And then working to revise our ordinance to be a little bit more contemporary and up to date, utilizing both community resources, but then also the available technology that's currently available that wasn't available at the time in 1991. Our old ordinance had required the Marshalltown Pawn Shop, or any Pawn Shop, which is the general store here in town, to report to the Police Department any pawn items, an item that was brought to the Pawn Shop that was actually given as a loan for cash. And then they would take that information, the person that brought that information in, what it was pawned, what was pawned, how much it was pawned for, and they would report that information to the Police Department. And since that time, the general store has done so, and they've also implemented some technology that's associated with their point-of-sale technology to help automatically send that information to an organization called Leads Online. And Leads Online is an independent organization that collects data from all over the country on point-of-sale for sale items that are either secondhand or pawn. And they also do scrap and junk items, people that would bring property in for cash, they would record the item, the amount that was taken, and the person that was coming in and recording. That information would be placed on a database for law enforcement agencies and strictly law enforcement agencies to utilize in their investigation and investigative techniques and tactics to do a couple of things. The most importantly would be to locate stolen items that were either located here locally or in other communities to get that property back to the rightful owner. And the other aspect of this is to find out who is actually making those transactions, and find out if we can make those investigative connections between people that are relaying or selling stolen property to our local businesses and open up investigations or continue investigations as part of our investigative process. So back in the last part of June, June 27th, I proposed an original ordinance revision. And at that time, I was asked to revise that in working with local business owners, and then also working with Lieutenant Stevenson and Chief Tupper, coming up with a revised version of that ordinance, which you should have in your packets currently. And then I did also list in the City Council memo some of the changes, but I just want to kind of discuss the changes that were made from the original ordinance. So what we're really looking at in developing this ordinance is trying to create a universal requirement for businesses that exchange property for cash, and then provide some type of general licensing agreement that is standardized over all of the businesses that do similar transactions. One of the original aspects of this ordinance was that the general store was doing something that a lot of other businesses were doing in similar business, but they weren't being regulated. And when Lieutenant Stevenson and I had went around to discuss with local business owners, we really didn't have an idea of what business, businesses in our community were actually buying or purchasing or selling things in exchange for cash. So what the ordinance would allow is for a standardized process of fees and licensing, which would be overseen by the mayor and groups of council members in this current ordinance to try to regulate and do background checks and regulate the types of businesses and the business members that are in our community purchasing items for sale. The other aspect of this is try to regulate theft and burglary. Theft and burglary are a significant problem in our, in our community. We deal in thousands of calls for service and reports for both burglary and theft combined, and allowing technology to kind of help us work through some of those investigations and take a look at property that is being exchanged within our community, and making sure that we're getting that back to, to the people that it is being taken from. So some of the overall changes, one of the requests was from the City Council, was that the overall title of the, of the ordinance, which was specifically directed towards pawn brokers, let me change. The title of the new revised ordinance that you have was actually changed to secondhand dealers, itinerant dealers, which are temporary dealers. We don't have many that come to town, but we do on occasion have people that deal in gold and silver and coins come to town locally and request permits to do sales, and they are temporary businesses. So that's what an itinerant dealer would encompass, and then also pawn brokers. In the ordinance, the dealer definition was changed to secondhand dealer. So the overall concept was to include pawn dealers, secondhand dealers, and anybody that, any business that actually exchanges items for cash, that somebody would bring into their business, and they would receive cash for those items. In the new revision, consignment dealers was removed from the ordinance, but it was also combined with secondhand dealers as part of the definition. And then junk dealer definition was actually deleted from the new version. We separated out the definition for tangible personal property to be a little bit more clear as it's listed, and we listed out specific items that we believe are items that we would be concerned about, that could be dealt with here locally, stolen property, and list those items out individually. We changed the version of itinerant dealers to deal and be processed through their permit under the same regulations that a local business would be. They would file an application, they would be subject to the same fee at this point, depending on the council's instruction. And then at that point, they would have the same regulations in reporting. We removed the requirements of scrap metal dealers and vehicle junkyards, as they are being regulated partially by Iowa code. But there's also a transition in the state of Iowa to curb scrap metal and recycling thefts, and there are additional separate technology that's available online for law enforcement, but then also available to scrap and junk dealers to report those items. This last July, the state of Iowa has moved specifically to deal with catalytic converters in the exact same process that we're requiring, other than the reporting method. The businesses are required to take that information and hold that information, and the state of Iowa would be able to have that if an audit wouldn't. We remove our, the battery disposal requirement was also deleted from the ordinance upon requests from talking with local business. And then we changed the appeal process. Instead of being centralized with the city administrator, the appeal process would be a group of people that would be selected by the mayor as part of the city council. In case there was an appeal process for people that would file a permit that would be rejected, or business that would actually be participating under the ordinance that would be, that would needed to be removed. And that process would, would be the same. We changed the report, the transaction information upon request of local businesses to be a little bit more expansive. Business owners believe that the 24-hour requirement to report things would be restrictive, so we moved it up to a 72-hour period for those. As part of this revision, if businesses choose, they have the option to work with Leads Online for no cost to use their point-of-sale system to download it into their system automatically. And during the last couple of weeks, I believe it was August 4th, we had an online session with local business owners that were interested in learning more about Leads Online, to be able to ask questions about their services and what they provided. We removed the reporting and the nature and the character of business advertising. That was also another request. There was concerns about whether or not the city or the police department needed to know where people advertised. I did see a value in where people advertise, mainly because we could see what type of clientele would be servicing that business, but definitely understand the freedom of businesses to be able to advertise any way that they, they choose in their own interest, and we removed that from the ordinance. The amount paid advanced in loan for each item is no longer required. Once again, talking with local businesses, they're concerned about proprietary businesses coming in and changing either their amounts or bids, and I can understand that that would be a competitive process, and we are no longer, no longer looking to record that information. We also removed the, the requirement for businesses to photograph each individual item that they're taking. I understand that that would be a burden for, for local businesses to, to photograph that and download that information. So that was deleted from the original ordinance that we presented. And then the disposal of items was moved up from five days, from 10 days to five business days, which gives businesses a little bit more freedom to remove things or destroy things or dispose of items that they wouldn't necessarily need or have available for sale. So in part of the discussion that we had had with Leads Online, much of what came up was privacy. Leads Online had, has been working with law enforcement agencies for over 20 years. They utilize the same protective requirements for security that law enforcement agencies have and have been using to protect privacy, because they're running information, they're running personal information, whether it's vehicle information, or they're running wanted information on items and serial numbers and that type of property. We also talked quite a bit about the process and the, the ability for businesses to have to use extra time into logging these items. Leads Online ensured that they've been working with many, many different types of businesses, and was, and are willing to provide guidance and training and the resources and technology for them to easily download that information and have it available on the website. How we would use it, this information, and how we would use this ordinance from the Marshalltown Police Department perspective, is we're currently low-staffed in our investigative division, and researching stolen items and researching property, especially on these, on ongoing cases involving burglary and theft, is extremely time-consuming, and it's difficult. And one of the things that Leads Online will do is it provides us with a centralized system that we can go in and we can key search items that are taken, either by color or however the description is put in there, and hopefully that we can have the ability to get that property back to the original owner and continue and better our law enforcement investigations. The other aspect of this is when I developed the ordinance, we're also working with other agencies in the state that we have investigative relationships with. So if someone brings something to us from another community, it allows us to work with other agencies to return stolen property, but more importantly, it allows us to know who's bringing items into our community to sell for cash, or who's fencing stolen property within our community that might not live here. And once again, this is a discussion. We are inherently flexible at many of the things that we, we put in there. This revision, and like I said, are things that we're, we're willing to take a look at, and we're looking to move forward with this ordinance or any other suggestions that the council might have.
Your Honor, if I may.
You may.
I just realized I need to abstain from any of this, because I was thinking brick and mortar all the time until Chris started talking. This affects me. I need to back out of any discussion of this subject. Thank you.
Okay. Actually, I think you can discuss, you just can't vote. It's probably the way that breaks down, but your choice on that, too.
I will go out in the audience and discuss this as a public I will go out in the audience and discuss this as a public citizen because it affects me as a public citizen.
Other councilor comments or questions?
Your honor?
Yes.
Captain Jones, would you mind sharing what other communities you used to benchmark this language from?
Sure. Ames was the, the major community that, that I used. Other organizations or other communities that currently are under the umbrella of leads online or utilize those services were Ames, Urban Dale, Mason City, Bettendorf, Marion, Muscatine, Des Moines, West Des Moines, Waterloo, Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, Davenport, Sioux City, Tama and Dubuque.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions up here? Your honor?
I guess one of my concerns outside of knowing what we're about to hear from existing businesses in town, but is also the fact that it inherently prevents businesses from coming into town by associating a fee in otherwise farmer's market, harvest market, arts event of some sort or otherwise, they're all dealers and by this, at least as written, would, would hinder possible interest from not only allowing existing businesses to do what they do, but inviting others to want to participate in the community and different events that we currently host.
So this ordinance would specifically address businesses that would take in items for cash for resale. So if they were buying from a wholesaler or they received items under donation, that wouldn't apply. Just, just to clarify.
Other council comments before we turn the mic open to the public?
Your honor?
Yeah.
Recently, my family did have a lawnmower stolen and I worked with Detective Heitman, I believe, who's very professional, worked diligently and, you know, was prompt about everything. You know, there's no resolution to it, so it's just gone. So, you know, I appreciate what you're trying to do with improving returning stolen goods, but I just think this, the whole thing is upside down. The requirements are just to owners of businesses. I know you say that the interface is with a point-of-sale system. I'm a business systems guy at work. I get the song and dance from all sorts of vendors all the time. Oh yeah, it just integrates with whatever you got, but it just doesn't work that way. And I don't know how sophisticated a lot of these point-of-sale systems would be for a consignment store or pawn shop. There is a program called NCIC. I'm sure you guys are familiar with that, aren't you?
Yes.
What would a model, why would a model like that not work where the police say, here's what's stolen? And then it would be up to the businesses to kind of cross-reference if they're like, oh, this is a little shady or we've never dealt with this guy before or this guy's from three counties over, why is he coming here? Why couldn't we use something more like that rather than putting all the burden on the business?
Well, that system, it doesn't exist. And I know that there's privacy concerns at where that information comes and who has access to it. And when we're talking about a system like NCIC, there is training and credentials that are involved. So people, and there are also state codes that, that are involved in making sure that the people that utilize those systems don't abuse those systems. And they're not using it for any other purpose other than an official reason or cause. I think it would be difficult to regulate from the state side and providing that information just to the general public. And unfortunately, it probably would be, that would open other general concerns that we might have about who's using it and what they're using it for.
Your honor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I guess my concerns are some of the businesses, especially the smaller businesses, because smaller businesses have it pretty tough the way it goes right now. And most of them are pretty precious, let alone fragile. And it, the profit margin sometimes is razor thin and just one more thing for them to do might be too much for them to do. I, you know, I absolutely understand what you're trying to do here, what you want to do, but for a lot of these businesses, I, I just think that we're reaching in maybe just a little too far for what some of them might be able to do. So.
And considering the discussion, I'm definitely open for suggestions on what the council believes would be necessary to, to pass this revision or at least direct us in, in an area where we could bring a revision forward that would be acceptable.
I'd like to hear some of the small business owners or the business owners have any suggestions.
Okay, hello. I'm Reddish Schmidt. I own State Street Trading Company Consignment Boutique. We also do tuxedo rental at 35 West State Street, right over there. So since we last met to discuss this ordinance, it has been revised, but no meaningful changes have been made. All the requirements that myself and all of these other business owners have raised issue with are still included. The recording of each and every item that a person consigns at my store, reporting it to the police is an unreasonable request. It's a privacy violation for both me and all of my consignors, not to mention the cost. There's been a big emphasis on this is a free service, this is an asset to you and your business. However, to comply with this ordinance, a lot of the times, it's just me at the store. So I don't have time on all my other work to also input all of these things into a system to help the police department. I'd have to hire an additional employee to work all the hours that I'm open, which at $15 an hour would cost me a minimum of $30,000 every year. And you can imagine as a small business owner running it myself, that's not feasible. It's worth repeating that it would make it nearly impossible for me to do business in Marshalltown at all, especially considering that other cities do not have these requirements, which is my next point. This ordinance, ordinance has been presented as keeping Marshalltown modern and in alignment with local communities, but that's not the case. I have read and reviewed the ordinances of many of the mentioned cities as well as other major cities in Iowa and surrounding, within about 100 miles of Marshalltown. Most of these cities do not have these requirements outside of pawn-specific items. And the few that do have some requirements specifically exclude consignment sales, which is what I do. A list of cities that either have no recording and reporting requirements or only have them for pawn items include, but is not limited to, Ankeny, Altoona, Bondurant, Clive, Cedar Falls, Cedar Rapids, Fort Dodge, Iowa City, Grinnell, Newton, North Liberty, Waterloo, Waukees and Omaha, which is outside of 100 miles, but it's one of the success stories that leads online says is one of their main champions of their service. Des Moines, West Des Moines and Ames, each do have some requirements outside of pawn items, but all explicitly exclude consignment sales and also exclude businesses with gross receipts of 50% or more of used clothing sales, which again is what I do. I do have the Ames ordinance that I've went through and I've spoken with the city of Ames specifically. And it's also actually in our ordinance where it says any consignment transaction of secondhand goods or the sale of secondhand goods donated without compensation, they rope consignment of what I do into that. They actually, the business owners that do consignment names had that put in there for that purpose. I've spoken with businesses in these cities that fall under the secondhand dealer definition. And it's clear that these businesses are not required to report all items using the online system, but are instead given the opportunity to, at their own discretion, enter items that they deem potentially high risk. So something high value, something rare, collectible, something that seems a little sketchy. This removes the bulk of the burden off of the business while still being an asset to the police department. Recording and reporting pawn items to the police department is something that has been around for a long time, using paper tickets as the current ordinance is written. Leads online is simply a modern way to do it, but lumping all of us other businesses into the same reporting requirements just doesn't make sense. Consignment and secondhand sales, for that matter, auto and metal recycling as well, are so fundamentally different from pawnbroking. They should not bear the same requirements and all references to sales outside of pawn items should be removed from this ordinance at a minimum. I again request that you reject this ordinance. I would recommend that if another revision of this presented ordinance is requested, that a committee of community members, business owners and a representative or two from the police department get together and write an ordinance that is in line with the surrounding communities, rather than just the police writing it, the ordinance themselves. I'd also be happy to volunteer myself to help write the revision. If our goal is to make Marshalltown great, we need to be welcoming new businesses and sustaining the existing ones that we have and bringing new people into the community, not driving them away, which is what this ordinance would do. Thank you for your time.
Mic's still open?
John Blaybaum, 18 West Main, Marshalltown, running a business there, record store. When we start with it, Leads Online, I participated in the FaceTime meeting to see what they were doing. One of my first questions was, I think it was the first question, what is your return rate? What is the success rate of your company in getting back stolen items? They said they don't collect that data. They later on gave me an anecdotal story about catching a murderer, I believe in Minneapolis, by turning in an ID and selling something. So they didn't collect that data, so I don't know how they sell the product as being successful and being of value if they can't provide data to say how well it works. Anyway, I'll go through the ordinance here and so I'll try to bullet point here and be as quick as I can. In the ordinance, we have titled it junk dealers, but we took out the definition of junk dealer completely from the ordinance. So I don't know how you match that up. Chapter 117, definitions of secondhand dealer. Any person who engages in the business of purchasing, selling, receiving, trading, consignment, selling or otherwise transferring for value of any secondhand property. I note that, but yet later on the ordinance, in the first and the second draft now, antique dealers are not included. I don't know why. That describes their business entirely. So I'm not picking on an antique store, I'm just saying, why isn't that? We have a bike store, we have furniture stores, we have other stores, but we seem to be addressing just a certain handful of stores. Application and issuance of a license. Liquor licenses go before the city council and get full approval or denial. Here it goes to the police chief or designee, as it's written, after the city clerk sends along the application. It also goes through the zoning administrator for approval, whether or not it meets zoning requirements. However, in the first draft, we had zoning requirements. The second represented, there's no zoning requirements whatsoever in the ordinance. So I don't know how that matches. So again, why didn't the city council approve this? Issuance or denial? If I get to denials of your license or an infraction, who decides that? Well, it says in the ordinance, the city clerk or their designee can revoke the permit if it's found that the permit holder has knowingly violated. I don't know what a violation is. Who reports it? How does it get reported? It doesn't address it in this ordinance. Is it a random citizen angry at that business owner? I don't know. But again, it now comes not to just the city administrator to approve, it's the mayor appointing three council members to decide if you get your license back. Why not the full council? If we're going to issue liquor licenses with a full council, this should be as well. In the recording of transactions, yes, they changed it to, from 24 hours to 72 hours. As I go through the descriptions and how we actually record these, number one, an accurate and detailed account of the sale, purchase, pawn, trade or exchange. What does an accurate account mean? Excuse me. What is accurate? In my mind, it might be the guy and a collection. In the police department or somebody else's mind, it may be a complete detailed list of everything that took place. But then later on, Ian here, I'm singled out in my business because I have to list titles, names of any artists of CDs, cassettes, albums that I take in. I don't notice any clothing, I don't know furniture, I don't see anything else, but my business is targeted. Fourth Amendment rights. Section 177.010, they can come into my business, the police can look for items they believe may have been stolen. If they believe it to be have stolen, they can just take it. There is no recourse for when do I get it back? Do they list at all that they know it was stolen? Where is the follow-up? It's just so vague, it's almost an attorney's nightmare. So I, I'm not giving up my fourth amendment rights. On top of it, customers, in full disclosure, if I have to take place in this, I will have to tell them, your name, address, information will be uploaded not just to me, but a third party. A lot of people get worried about going to third parties. I do. I worry about it in my emails, that somebody's going to sell my data. I don't trust a third-party company to do this. If the police department wants me to work with them on items, I'm happy to do it. Purchases and collections, but nickel and diming it here and breaking it all out like we are with a lot of vagaries is not going to work for me. And I, I vote that we don't revise or we really do a revision where it works if everybody here's a small business. Because I won't be able to do this and I will have to close down. Thank you.
Chris Jones, Captain of the Police Department. All valid concerns that were brought forward during the discussion the last month. Some of the other things that we discussed from the police department perspective with Lieutenant Stevenson and Chief Tupper is the development of a minimum amount of money that something would be, have value to be able to report to the system. Now, if we did do that, I would be required to change that section of the ordinance that would distinguish the amount that was recovered or paid for the item. So that was something that we considered. And the fact that we would leave it up to the council if they did choose to do that, to figure out what that amount would be, whether it's 10, 25, 50, $100. This, this process and this system is, is important to us, important to our police operations, and we're looking to work together at coming up with some general parameters. One of the other things that we had discussed was allowing this to be voluntary with local business owners under the permit statute, but then also providing a lesser permit for fee for businesses that would be willing to participate in the system with Leads Online. And that would also be indicative of what the council would, would believe, whether, for example, whether it would be a $50 permit, yearly permit fee for a business that participated in the service or a $200 permit fee for one that chose not to. But it would allow the businesses to, to be voluntary, but then it would also allow us to be able to license those businesses and provide them with permits so we could not only regulate the, the current businesses that are currently here in Marshalltown, but then also any new businesses and, and owners that may not have the same general standards of secondhand sales that our current businesses do.
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. So Captain Jones and his team have worked really hard to try to bring a product to you that we can have a discussion about and hopefully pass a new ordinance. We need a new ordinance, okay? And if I, if I own the pawn shop, I'm asking myself, why do I have to do these things if nobody else does? Okay, we need to do something. And I've, I've been coming to you frequently and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you opened a door about expressing frustrations. I'm going to express a frustration, okay? We don't have enough cops to do the business we need to do. We don't. I need more cops. Or I need a different policy in ordinances that will help as force multipliers to help us do our job. So if I can get two more cops and a, and a records clerk, we may be able to do more proactively from the police department to go out into the businesses, business community every time we have a burglary or theft with a list of items and, and talk to them that way. But right now, I don't have the personnel to do it. So I'm asking for some help. I think that, I think that I've demonstrated in the 11 years that I've worked for you that I am community-minded and I can, I'm concerned about the business community as well. And I think that we operate the police department from a community approach and a common sense approach. And we're not trying to do anything heavy-handed. And in the police department didn't write this ordinance, we wrote it in conjunction with a legal advisor. An attorney wrote the ordinance. And the, the attorney that we used, patterned the ordinance after other cities similar to Marshalltown to include the city of Ames. So we're happy to make adjustments. We're happy to make changes. I think Captain Jones laid out a laundry list of changes that were made from the first meeting. But this is an ordinance that we need and we would like to move forward with more discussion of what you need from us so that we can bring a product back to you that you're willing to entertain and, and bode on. Again, we're, we're trying to do what's best for the community. And, and since the first discussion, I've started proactively sharing with you every week in my weekly report, the number of theft and burglary crimes that are reported. And I think- And I think last week it was six burglaries and eleven thefts. And those numbers stay pretty consistent week to week. So we need some help, and we're doing our best to try to meet the needs of the business community and your expectations, and please direct us on how you want us to go forward with this. I appreciate your time.
Chief, if I might, do you think there's value in what Bretta was talking about, getting together with the police department?
Well, we've tried to do that, not everybody's been willing to sit down with us, but I'm happy to do that. I think there is some value to doing that. We invited a lot of people to sit down in the Leads Online session, and most didn't take advantage of that. So I'm certainly happy to have a discussion with the public, yes.
I just think there'd be some value to trying it again, seeing how we have some people over here raising their hand that they'd be willing to sit down and put something together.
Yeah, and we're willing to do that, okay? But what I'm hearing from some of the business people is, they just don't want anything. And we're looking for some middle ground here.
I was going to make a really out-of-whack comment about the fact that at least we're not dealing with massage parlors, but then I thought better of that.
It's almost the same discussion though, isn't it?
Well, you know, it was a good idea, is trying to stop something really terrible going on out there, but the reaction in the business community was so adverse that we never did get an ordinance put together. Now, we maybe should have considered having people that are foul, and we have a lot of good, foul, masseuses in town, including some that have helped my family immensely, together with the peace officers to try to figure out a way to have it work for everybody.
We did that.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did that. Jessica and I had a meeting, at least one meeting, for sure.
Yeah, that's right, we did. Okay. Well, any other questions for the chief? Otherwise, I'll open the mic back up to the other public comment.
Thank you.
Bretta Schmidt, thirty-five West State Street. I would just like to maybe reiterate where I'm coming from a little bit more here. I am not, the middle ground for me doesn't really apply. It's not that I'm not willing to work with the police or that I want nothing, it's that if we are, our goal is to be in line with other communities around us, I've read through their ordinances, I'm not just, you know, blowing smoke. It is not the same. A middle ground for me here, having me do something, is more than what's required in all of these other places that we're quoting our, we want to be similar. And I understand wanting to update and be similar to these other communities, but in this case, it's not. And especially with Ames, they specifically exclude motor vehicle junk, all that type of stuff. They have now included in this new revision, motor vehicle junkyards, all that type of stuff. So it is not the same, and there's definitely room for us to come together where I'm happy to look into things and do different things and work with the police department, but if we're trying to go for fairness and equality with the other towns, that's not what we're coming to if we come to a middle ground necessarily. So I just, thank you.
Doug Gervich, M. Gervich and Sons. And I don't deny or doubt that we need a couple more officers on the force, and I would suggest that we pursue that line of thinking, rather than place the burden on the few small businesses that we have in town. I think it's a community-wide effort dealing with theft and burglaries, but we seem to want to just ask or place that burden on the small business folks, and yet we claim as a community that we really want these small business folks. We're a boutique kind of town, and we've got Thirteenth Street District, we've got downtown. Where are the folks going to, small businesses is what we want. I mean, I hear it all the time, and I agree with Chief Mike and all that, yeah, we need more officers. So let's do the officer thing, rather than dump the burden on the small business person, we have so few of them. Secondly, where does the data go that Leads Online collects? I've heard that raised several times. I really'd like to know what happens to the data. I would think it has some market value for some kind of markets. And, yeah, come on up, Mike.
That was a question that was specifically addressed when we had the session with Leads Online. If we're their customer, the data belongs to us once we stop being their customer, they do not ever sell the data to a third party, never, ever, have never done that. That's not part of their business plan. So the data is kept secure in their systems, and this is a organization that works with, you know, organizations in the federal government, like the FBI, the IRS, many entities that have the need for security. And I understand that everybody's vulnerable to internet attacks and things like that, but a lot of these businesses are already using databases that are vulnerable, okay? So I'm confident, I would not bring this to you if I was not confident in the company that we're recommending, and they have assured us, they do not sell this data to anybody. Thank you.
Chief, could you tell us about their business model? How do they make money?
Going into business with city and county and other governmental agencies, we would be paying them a fee every year to be involved with this program.
Approximately how much?
Do you remember, Chris?
It's about three thousand dollars a year.
Three thousand dollars a year.
Serena Stabinow, fourteen oh three West Main. I am very concerned about Marshalltown and the small business, and, you know, with theft on the rise, I think the city and the businesses need to look at, well, why is there theft? And as a social worker, it's to support their drug habit. So Marshalltown has a drug problem, and we need to address it instead of putting the burden on small businesses.
That was a very intelligent comment. Marshalltown's got a drug problem, and we need to admit it. They're stealing stuff because they need to get drugs, so.
I don't remember your address, but for the record, in the public, you're Lonnie Holgland, who was just at the mic.
Every community in the United States has a drug problem, and I think you've heard me say more than once that drugs are an issue here, okay? And then I think it was just recently, when I talked about our annual report, I talked about how drugs do drive most of the crime that we investigate, including property crimes, theft, and burglary. And I told you at that time, I need another drug detective. So we're looking for proactive ways to address these problems, proactive ways that meet your budget restrictions as well. And so if you can give me another drug detective, two more cops, and a records clerk, we can do other proactive things within the police department to address these issues. I found a way for three thousand dollars a year to try to do the same thing, and that's why I'm here today. So we're happy to, again, make adjustments to the ordinance, we'll sit down with anybody that wants to sit down with us, but we're looking for some help so that we can address criminal issues in this community that will make it safer for the public and safer for business to operate.
Four more times and you'll match the record of the number of times that some same person has come up to the microphone.
Wonderful. Serena Stabinow, fourteen oh three West Main. So with that being said, you know, the city gave YSS a large amount of money to help with the drug problem, and what are you guys doing with that money? You put two social workers in the school. How's that working? Not well.
You're even closer to the record now.
I know, I know. We did not put two social workers in the school. We have a social worker working in the police department every day, ten hours a day, seven days a week, and they're going out with police officers to address crisis problems and social service needs in our community, in an effort to address drug problems, in an effort to address mental health issues in our community, in an effort to address homelessness in our community, in an effort to address family dynamic and family violence issues in our community. It's money well spent, and I sincerely appreciate your investment in the impact program because it is working. And if you want to give me more money for that, we'll hire more social workers, but it's been a great program for us, and we have not placed social workers in the school system.
All right. John, we'll recognize you one more time, but those are already spoken, you know, we was having a three-minute.
John Blaybaum, eighteen West Main. Yeah, it's not going to take three. I believe, if I recall, the last meeting when we discussed this ordinance, that police department was directed to discuss with the business owners and go over this to see what might or might not work. That did not take place. We did get a FaceTime with Leads Online to find out what their business model is and how it works, but beyond that, there were no discussions and follow-up with myself, and I'm not sure, other business owners. So we keep going here and spending time discussing this ordinance, so I don't know how long we're going to go with it. That's it.
A new face.
My name is David Hesper, I'm representing Action Auto Parts at one hundred South Eighteenth I have a sign, I believe, Mr. Mayor, that you said that you have a sign, this is back to blue. We have one of those in front of our new building, and our officers are asking for some help. I'm not sure this is helpful. Certainly, when I first read this, I found it to be burdensome, and I really found it to be almost anti-business. I'm not sure that I'm right in my feeling, I only spent forty-five minutes maybe looking at this. I can't get behind this, but I'm not certain that I can stand totally in front of it to stop it. The only thing that I would say is that I would certainly raise my hand and be happy to sit down with the officers, or anybody, and try to come at this, maybe a better way, something that can help our officers. Obviously, they need more officers. I can tell you, when I call them and tell them that we've been hit for five thousand dollars, or twenty-five thousand dollars, or whatever it is that we've been hit with, where they come up with their cordless sawzalls and they just cut our new fence, and they come in and they steal our catalytic converters, it's not a wonderful feeling to get the nine-one-one people on the phone, they say, well, when we get officer free, we'll try to send him down. Officer comes down, they say, there's nothing we can do. Our officers need some help, I'm not sure this is the right help, but I'm very willing to sit down and try to work with them, and if it asks for a little bit more from me, which I don't think I have a lot of time, then I'd be happy to try to help them. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Well, for staff direction, what would you recommend? I'm tempted to, for those that might have raised a hand, I missed it because I'm short and this monitor's kind of high, I'll stick around afterwards, so if, well, Dave Rutter, I've got your names, if there are others that would be willing to try to form a little ad hoc committee to iron out some of the details and come up with something, I'm happy to collect those names, but also open to other suggestions about where to go from here. Okay, got kind of quiet, so I'll stick around and take additional names, and maybe see if we can't make another pass at it like we did with the, trying to get the illicit massage burglars regulated in town. Very good. That will cover our discussion for the night, unless I missed anything, or anybody else wants to jump up to the mic, unless you've already been up there more than once. Let's go on to public comment, and I have to read this to the public. Members of the public may make comments on the, that was not on the agenda at this time. You have to approach the mics, state your name and address for the record, limit your comments to three minutes unless longer is authorized by me. Director comments to the mayor, council as a whole, and the councilors and the mayor shall not engage in discussion or debate on these items, because we might violate the open meetings laws if we did. The mic is open again to the public. Not seen anybody rise to the mic. This publication was up here for me today, it was just published recently, the Chamber of Commerce was behind it, it's the Marshalltown Iowa Into the Great Wide Open. It's a magazine that's available online, but also at the temporary chamber offices, and a pileback there, and so if you haven't seen it, pick one up or look for it online, because it really does highlight the good things we've been able to do in Marshalltown despite having a tornado and a derecho and a coronavirus. Okay, we are adjourned at seven thirty-three PM. Thanks for coming.